Good afternoon and welcome to City Council Organizational Meeting for Tuesday, October 25th. We will first start with a roll call. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor Higgin, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Croson.
Present.
Counselor Dodick.
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Here.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Parker.
Here.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present.
Present, thank you.
Right. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot People of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot People, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel, adoption of agenda. Be it resolved that the agenda of the organizational meeting of City Council on October 25th, 2022 be adopted as presented. City Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, Mayor Higgin, there are no amendments to this agenda. Thank you.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
I'll call the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And I do have a submission, Standing Policy Committee, 4.1.1, from Counselor Croson, Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Council, Terms of Reference Update 4.1. Be resolved that the City Council approve the amended terms of reference as an Attachment 3, and further be resolved that the City Council refer the term of reference to administra- Terms of Reference to Administration to review the terms of reference for any perceived risk, and if there's a need for a bylaw, direct Administration to prepare a bylaw for the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for City Council's consideration. And we'll open that up for questions. Are there any questions? I do have a question to City Manager or his designate. So if there's a need for a bylaw, this resolution will already ask for you to prepare that bylaw before coming back with any recommendation?
That's my understanding. I'm looking to have Mr. Lowen here if he has any further comment on that.
And the reason I say that before, Mr. Lowen, I just, it's, if it's something that is, if there's any questions or comments from Administration who are already starting this bylaw, would that information come back prior to actually doing this so that Council could have direction in that?
If, if it went back and it was reviewed and it was simply a request to become an advisory committee, then no bylaw would be necessary. If it comes back and there is a desire for it to be action-oriented, I would bring it with a bylaw. I just wanted to be clear, is it Council's intent that Administration makes that decision?
Well, I, I know when this was set up as an advisory committee, this is something that I think would need to go back to, maybe to Arlac to look at, and maybe just to be sure what their, their intent was, is to keep it as an advisory, or if it was more of an action committee. And so I don't know if there's a change for this, but Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Through you to Counselor Croson, if I, if I can. I was part of Governance Committee when we did have the co-chairs present. At that, my recollection was that they weren't, they weren't assuming that they were going to be an action-oriented committee, but unfortunately, on further consideration of the terms of reference that have been provided to us, it does seem like there are some actions in there. I'm wondering, Counselor Croson, if, if you would entertain a thought of referring this back to Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, just for one last quick look and discussion, and see if this is the direction they did want to go as an action-oriented committee, or if they were wanting to be more of a high-level advisory committee, whether that's to Council, or to Administration, or to both. Just wondering your thoughts.
I think the difficulty that we're seeing on this is that what advisory and action mean means different things, I think, to Council and to Arlac, because Arlac does have a budget and is doing things, and is doing anything in action or not, that's something that would have to be determined. And so I think until Arlac and Council do come to a better understanding of what advisory means and what action means, because they've been doing action for quite a number of years, actually, if Council is aware of it, it might be another matter. But yes, I think that we are having that discussion, and I think Arlac needs to come to an agreement at their level and then bring it to Council. So I would be fine referring with it. It's almost like I could have thought of that myself. So I do make the motion that we refer this back to Arlac and have a deeper conversation with them before it comes back to Council level.
Thank you.
All right, Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel? Yes, that's right.
Yeah. So just sort of to follow up on, on what my two colleagues have stated here, can we also then have, coming back to Council as well as to Arlac, some information around the difference between an advisory committee and an action committee, so that we can all sort of be, so we can all be on the same page and understanding what the difference of those two things are?
So that's a request of Administration, then?
Yes, yeah. I think we need that from Administration. I think both Council and Arlac need that information.
So the motion, we refer, refer the terms of reference back to Arlac, and further request that Administration bring a report to Council on the difference between advisory and action committees?
Yes, please.
Now, should that also go to Arlac, though? Like you said, to bring that back to Council, but I, but I think-
She had Arlac in there, too.
Okay.
Yeah, she had Arlac. We-
Arlac, okay, I'm sorry. So it would go to both, prior to, okay. Counselor Middleton Hope?
Just for clarification, should not any direction from Council go through the representative on Arlac, which is the Deputy Mayor and the Mayor?
This, this would go back. Now, this changes on a regular basis, so I know Counselor Croson was, was, is Chair of the Governance, so of course, this is a resolution coming out of Governance, but if that's going to go back to Arlac, that can go through myself or the Deputy Mayor.
Or, or Counselor Croson, does it going to go back through Governance, SPC? Is that what you're saying?
I don't think there's any real need to worry about how it gets back to Arlac, because then once it's in Arlac's hand, they'll decide how to bring it up, whether they want to bring it up through their Council representatives, or if they want to bring it back, because they do report to one of the SPCs. So Arlac would have a number of ways of bringing it back forward. I don't think it matters how they get the information, as long as they get the information.
Okay. So is, just so that we can make sure that it does get to Arlac and to our Administration, Counselor Croson, this is something that we, your resolution will, will have Administration pass us along, correct? Or you're taking-
Well, Administration is going to prepare the report, so it makes sense that Administration would pass it on to both Council and Arlac.
Great. Administration, you've, I see nodding of heads. All right. Okay, so now that that has been pulled and passed, do we, Madam City Clerk?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been passed, it's just been drafted.
Yeah, just-
So just for clarification, we're referring this whole item-
Yes.
-to Arlac. To do what and to come back when?
And a date to come back. Do we have a date? I know that they're meeting the third week in November. I say "they," "we" are meeting the third week in November, and I think it's the 25th. It's the, so-
Back to Council by when?
Would first quarter of 2023 be sufficient?
Number one, 2023?
The first quarter. Counselor Carlson, is it something along this, or as far as the date?
No, it was only because Madam City Clerk had asked for why, and so we were further terms of reference back to Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for clarification on action committee versus advisory committee. I think that's the, the whole point.
Report back to Council. At a, what it sounds like, Counselor Croson, you had mentioned here the first quarter of 2023?
Just knowing that Christmas break is coming, et cetera, and that staff have work on this as well, they can always do it earlier, but that would be the deadline for when we'd like to see it.
Okay, so let's pick, pick a date anyways, and it can be, no later than, I guess we could put, if that works. And Madam City Clerk, as far as Council, or that would come back to Council, not back to Governance, is what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
Want it to come back-
Did you want it to come back to Governance, Counselor Croson?
Makes sense to go to Governance first, because then the public can weigh in, et cetera. It does give it one more level of, of conversation.
Okay, so Governance in, when is the meeting, if, if we can pick a date here in-
The calendar hasn't been adopted, that's next.
That's why I said first quarter, because if we say first quarter, it doesn't matter if we haven't adopted the calendar yet.
Okay, within the first quarter. All right. With that, then, I guess that's, we can put that to a vote, then?
Yep, that referral motion can go to-
Referal motion to a vote. So Counselor Croson, to open?
I think everyone understands what clarification we're looking for, and unless there is any more debate, I'll simply call the question.
I see no further debate. Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And I do have a submission from Deputy Mayor Parker. Administration Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees of Council and External Committees. Be resolved that City Council appoint the following members of Administration to the following committees for a one-year term effective January 1st, 2023. Council Boards, Commissions, Committees: Travis Grindel to the Combative Sports Commission; and External Committees: Darwin Jewell to the Corvan Ray Link Pathway Committee; and Doug Cowe to the Old Man Watershed Council. And further be resolved that Council direct the members of Administration appointed to the External Committees to report to Council through the Standing Policy Committees at least annually. And open for questions. No questions. Counselor Parker, or Deputy Mayor Parker, to open debate?
I've just called the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And I have a resolution from Counselor Middleton Hope. 2023 Council and Standing Policy Committee Meeting Calendar, which is in the attachment that we have seen. Be resolved that City Council adopt the 2023 Council and Standing Policy Committee Meeting Calendar as provided in Attachment 1. Is there a way to have that on, or does anybody have any questions? We don't have to, it was in the attachment. And we do have a completely full gallery that may want to see it. All right.
Mayor Higgin, I do acknowledge there's some dates missing. May 9th we'll have to fill in as clerical, and December 19th. They're blank.
Is there anything on those dates, or just that the numbers are not in there?
Nothing on them.
Nothing on them, okay. With that, any questions? See no questions? Counselor Middleton Hope, open debate? Seriously?
Is there any debate?
I see no one.
Then I'll call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Now moving to Confidential Report, 6.1, Council Committee Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees of Council and External Committees. Be resolved that City Council approve Council Members' Appointments on Internal and External Boards, Committees, and Commissions for a term commencing immediately and ending on October 31st, 2023 as follows. Mayor Blaine Higgin, Lethbridge Housing Authority; Counselor Mark Campbell, Community Standing Policy Committee Committee; Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee; and Highway 3 Twinning Development Association; Counselor Jeff Carlson, Audit Standing Policy Committee; Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee; Governance Standing Policy Committee; and the Green Acres Foundation; Counselor Belinda Croson, Audit Standing Policy Committee; Civic Work Standing Policy Committee; Governance Standing Policy Committee; and Lethbridge Police Commission; Counselor Rayco Dodick, Audit Standing Policy Committee; Governance Standing Policy Committee; Green Acres Foundation; Intermunicipal Committee, City and County of Lethbridge; and Counselor John Middleton Hope, Audit Standing Policy Committee; Civic Work Standing Policy Committee; Governance Standing Policy Committee; and Intermunicipal Committee, City and County of Lethbridge; Counselor Nick Palladino, Civic Work Standing Policy Committee; Community Safety Standing Policy Committee; Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee; and Intermunicipal Committee, City and County of Lethbridge; Deputy Mayor Ryan Parker, Civic Work Standing Policy Committee; Community Safety Standing Policy Committee; Green Acres Foundation; and Joint Committee of City and Lethbridge and, Lethbridge, City of Lethbridge and Lethbridge School Boards; Acting Mayor Jen Schmidt Rempel, Community Safety Standing Policy Committee; Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee; Joint Committee, City of Lethbridge and Lethbridge School Boards; and the Lethbridge Police Commission. And further be resolved that City Council requests that Mayor, requests the Mayor to request the identified Board, Commission, or Committee to, for the requested confidential information, and further be resolved that Council direct the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents, and attachments with regard to Council Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees remaining confidential pursuant to Section 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act by Counselor Carlson. Are there any questions? No questions, open debate. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. In addition to the committees that are presented, Council also sits as, I guess, a Board of the Whole, or Committee of the Whole for Economic Standing Policy Committee, as well as Lethbridge Emergency Advisory Committee, but these are our Committee Appointments for the following year, and ask for my colleague's support.
I would just add to that, that, thank you for, for pointing that out, as well as all of these different committees, understanding that although there are members of Council that are appointed, all members of Council are invited to attend to those meetings as well. So they are open to, to all, and so if there's any more debate, if not, pass back to Counsel Carlson.
Thank you. Just to close, as Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel pointed out, that a year from now, we will be doing our organizational meeting on All Hallows' Eve, and so I trust we'll all be in costume at that point, and it should be quite fun. With that, I'll call for the vote.
Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Carries. You're going as Mark Campbell? All right. I have a resolution from Counselor Carlson, Public Member Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, 6.2. Be resolved that City Council appoint the following public members to serve on their Boards, Commissions, and Committees as outlined below for the following terms effective January 1st, 2023. Assessment Review Board: Sue Medhurst, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025, a reappointment; John Hood, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; and Paul Tessier, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; the Sir Alexander Galt Museum and Archives Board of Directors: Roberta Stevens, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; Heart of Our City Committee: Matthew Salmon, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024; Graham Sarzucci, a two-year term, I'm sorry for that pronunciation if I had that wrong, expiring December 31st, 2024; Hannah Ferguson, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024; Blaine Badiac, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024; and Historic Places Advisory Committee: Andrea Kelyer, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024, which is a reappointment; Lethbridge Library Board: Norma Coroni, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee: Patrick Wilson, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024, is a reappointment; Jade Oldfield, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024; Subdivision Development and Appeal Board: Jason Schreiner, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; and Evan Nielsen, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; Youth Advisory Council: Jax Fraser, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025; Luca Bo, a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024; and Lethbridge Combative Sports Commission: David McFalls, a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2025, is a reappointment. Further be resolved that City Council reappoint Brian Janot to the Lethbridge Combative Sports Commission for a three-year term effective January 1st, 2023, and expiring December 31st, 2025, which is outside of the six consecutive years as outlined in S44 of Bylaw 6250, the Procedure Bylaw, and of course, would require a two-thirds affirmative vote. Further be resolved that City Council direct Administration, City Clerk's Office to proceed with conducting a police information check and vulnerable sectors checked for the recommended citizens for the Lethbridge Police Commission; and Youth Advisory Council appointees 18 years of age and older, respectively, and return to a future meeting of City Council for appointment as per Bylaw 6250, the Procedure Bylaw. And further be resolved that City Council thank all members whose terms are expiring or who have resigned from their position for the service and be asked to complete the departing members survey, including the following individuals who resigned from their positions prior to their terms ending. Susie Nixon, public member on the Assessment Review Board; Simba Walgama, a public member for the Lethbridge Police Commission; Sydney Whiting, the public member for Youth Advisory Council; and Sinead Seaver, a public member of Youth Advisory Council. And further be resolved that City Council direct the closed session reports, documents, and discussions pertaining to the public member appointments of the 2023 Boards, Commissions, and Committees remain confidential as per Section 17 Harmful to Personal Privacy, Section 19 Confidential Evaluations, and Section 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Are there any questions? I, I do have one question. If this vote goes through, Madam City Clerk, with two-thirds affirmative vote, as we noticed with the reappointment for Combative Sports Commission, can be done as a whole vote, and if it is, is, depends on what that outcome is, if it's more than two-thirds, we would not have to revote on that, correct? All right, Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. That was going to be my question, if we should vote on that clause separately, but I think you've answered it.
All right. With that, I see no further questions. Open debate?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. First and foremost, I want to thank all members of our community who stepped up, put their names forward, and offered to help serve our community on these Boards, and Commissions, and Committees. Secondly, I would like to also thank members of Council and the Chairs or Designates from each Committee who spent the time going through the, the many, many members of our community who stepped forward and did the interviews, and it was a delight to meet so many very interested members of our community, and applaud everyone for stepping forward. And I'd be very remiss if I didn't thank the City Clerk and her office and staff for the, the excellent work they did advertising for these positions. Really, I think the reason we had such a great turnout was because of the exceptional work that was done and the support they gave us through the process. So unless there's anything further, Mr. Mayor, I'll call for the vote, but I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Counselor Campbell?
Just, I wanted to echo Counselor Carlson. I know the interviews that I was able to conduct, it just, just the quality of applicants was just wonderful, and it's heartbreaking to say, well, we can only, we can only fill in two positions. So having to, having to, I'm sure there's, the call is, you know, you didn't make it this time, but man, it wasn't because you weren't great. So it just, I wanted to thank everyone who did put their names forward. It's, it's quite a commitment, and I appreciate all the work and all of the interviews that we did. That's all. And hope we acknowledge that.
Excellent. Counselor Carlson?
There's nothing further. I'll just call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right. I took you as a vote. All right, good. I have a resolution from Counselor Dodick, ratification of Organizational Representatives on Boards, Commissions, and Committees, 2023. Be resolved that City Council appoint the following organizational representatives on their Boards, Commissions, and Committees for terms beginning on January 1st, 2023. Number one, Linda Shade, manager of Icaqstini Indigenous Services, UFL University of Lethbridge, representative of the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a three-year term expiring on December 31st, 2025. Number two, Marcia Blackwater, Indigenous Coordinator, Lethbridge College, Lethbridge College representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a two-year term expiring on December 31st, 2024. Tara Lennox, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce, Board Member, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce representative for the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a two-year term expiring on December 31st, 2024. Shelby Kirkfold, a coordinator, First Nations Métis and Inuit Holy Spirits Catholics Separate School Division, Holy Spirit Roman, Holy Spirit Roman Catholic Separate School Division Representatives on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a three-year term expiring on December 31st, 2025. And Marilyn Contois, Lethbridge Public Library Technician, Indigenous Services, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a three-year term expiring on December 31st, 2025. Joel Mountain Horse, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Member, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a three-year term expiring on December 3rd, 2025. Cassandra Chalifou, Community Engagement Partnerships Coordinator for Native Counselling Services of Alberta, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, for a three-year term expiring on December 31st, 2025. George Cool, Lethbridge Historical Society Member, Lethbridge Historical Society Representative on the Historical Places Advisory Committee, for a two-year term expiring on December 31st, 2024. Willem Fraser, manager of Advocacy and Community Development, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce representative on the Heart of the City Committee, for a two-year term expiring on December 31st, 2024. Dominika Wojcik, Director of Tourism Opportunity Tourism Lethbridge, Tourism Lethbridge Representative on the Heart of the City Committee, for a two-year term expiring on December 31st, 2024. Hyatt Mackwick, grade 12 student at Chinook High School, Lethbridge School Division Number 51, representative on the Youth Advisory Council for a one-year term expiring on December 31st, 2023. And further be resolved that all departing organizational members be thanked with a letter from the Mayor for their contribution, and asked to complete the departing members survey. And further be resolved that City Council direct the closed session reports, documents, and discussions pertaining to ratification of organizational representatives on Boards, Commissions, and Committees, 2023, remain confidential as per Section 17 Harmful to Personal Privacy, Section 19 Confidential Evaluations, and Section 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Open for questions. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Through you to the City Clerk, if, if I may. These are outside organizations that do have representation on various committees, boards, et cetera. Are there any spots that we're having issues filling from those organizations? I know in past, we've, we've had organizations that haven't been able to find someone to step up to the plate, to sit on various BCCs for us. Are there any currently outstanding?
Do you mean one with organizational representatives?
Yes.
No, I believe they're all filled. All organizations have provided nominations.
Excellent, thank you. And second question, do we occasionally go out and check with the organizations that we ask to appoint reps, to see if it's still meeting their needs, or it's still adding value for them, or they feel that they're still adding value to the representation, representative committees that they sit on?
I don't believe we go that far when we ask for nominations, but if Council wanted to give us that direction to do it on their behalf, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Just something that tweaked to me, that we may be asking someone to sit on a board, and they're like, we have not provided any value to this committee, but we keep sending someone.
It would, sorry, it would be in the terms of reference to have that in the composition. So it would be a review of the terms of reference by that respective committee.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Higgin.
No further questions. I'll turn the timer to open debate. Counselor Dodick?
Questions have been asked and answered, and I call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. So that is it for the organizational, organizational meeting of Council. We'll just take a quick five-minute break?
We're journeying-
We're gonna go back.
-organizational meeting, and then we'll be starting the regular meeting. Do you want to go enclosed, or?
So I was, to go closed, to come back to finished or closed, and then come to our Council meeting after that. Because do we have a set time? Did we not have 12:30 or just after, I guess, for our City Council?
Only set time is a public hearing at 3:00.
Public hearing, okay. So we will have a motion to go in camera, to go back to our closed. Jen?
Just a thought, should we not open our, close this meeting, start our next, then go in camera?
Yes, that's the best thing to do. They're two separate meetings, so.
Okay. So we've closed off the organizational, that's done, so now we're, oh, open, I'm, I'm sorry, right? Thank you, thank you. So first off, we will-
Just have to get the streaming. We just have to get the streaming. We have to close this meeting, and Janessa needs some time to start the streaming for the other one, so five minutes, please.
Okay, five, okay, five minutes.